Good evening, welcome everybody to this January meeting of the Lake Mills Area School District Board of Education. Our mission statement is preparing all of today's students for tomorrow's opportunities. Verification of meeting notice?
The agenda was submitted to the Lake Mills leader on January 3rd and posted at the library, the post office, and the bank of Lake Mills on that same date, and it's also on the district website.
Thank you. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Could we stand for the pledge, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
Roll call, please.
Rachel Babies, John Delaney.
Here.
Robert D'Imperio.
Here.
David Rado.
Here.
Richard Mason.
Here. Any agenda revisions or approval? No revisions, then I'll accept the approval. Motion?
Remove approval of the agenda as printed.
Second.
Wouldn't a second have approved the agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same side. Okay, the agenda's been approved. We're going to move our administrative reports.
Well, let's start with Captain Thader, that's here.
We want to start with Captain Thader, okay.
Okay, alright.
You're on.
Yes, sir.
Need to come down, Dr. Mason.
Okay.
So, I have the privilege this evening, unfortunately, the chief sends his regards. He could not be here this evening, so I am here in his stead. And I'm here tonight to basically recognize and present the Lake Mills Area School District, Lake Mills School Board, and District Administrator Pamela Strike with an award. This is a chief's award, it is being awarded to you guys this evening for all of your hard work and all the help that you guys were for Captain Truman's funeral and everything that took place at that time. It was a very hard time for the department, and really, without all of you guys and all of your support, we really couldn't have made that happen the way we did. So, with that being said, we bring, we have an award for you guys. This is a chief's award, and normally, he would be here to present it, but I get to fill in this evening, and I'm presenting it to you, sir.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Alright, good, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, now, we're going to do Mrs. Brockert.
Thank you. I am pleased to announce Paul France with Baker Tilly, virtual Kraus. He's here to present our audit report.
Thank you. As Wendy said, my name is Paul France, I'm a partner with Baker Tilly located out of our Milwaukee office. Prior to tonight, you should have received two bound documents with a fancy black cover, and then tonight, a couple-page handout that summarizes those two documents. That handout that I passed out tonight is what we'll use to walk through those two documents. So, our audit objective was to express an opinion on the district's financial statements as of June 30, 2019. We've issued an unmodified opinion, which is also known as a clean bill of health. It's the highest level assurance that you can receive from an external auditor, and ultimately, the outcome you're looking to receive. And what that unmodified opinion means is that that financial statement document has all necessary disclosures within it, has applied accounting principles between years consistently, and that all governmental accounting standards have been adopted appropriately. So, again, highest level assurance that you can receive, and that's ultimately what you're looking to hear. You can find that opinion on pages 1 through 3 of the financial statement document. On page 2 of the handout, just some high-level financial results as of June 30, 2019, in the first column, your general fund, at about $17.5 million of revenue, and about $15.3 million of expenditures, and about $1.8 million in the transfer to your special education fund to assist in covering the costs related to that activity, leaving you with a net income in the general fund last year of about $334,000. So, you increased your fund balance from $4.1 million to just under $4.5 million. So, a very healthy position in your general fund. We take that fund balance, then, and drop it into a number of different buckets, the first being non-spendable. You've got about $11,000 of non-spendable fund balance, and what that means is that there's activity on the balance sheet that has not had an income statement effect as of June 30, but it will the following year. So, it's not available, not available to spend, okay? Leaving you about 4.400, excuse me, $4,457,000 of unassigned fund balance. This would be the reserves of the general fund. And so, to kind of give you a bench point, as far as is that a healthy reserve to have, I take that to your budgeted expenditures, and divide that to your unassigned category, and I want that number to be somewhere between 10 to 25 percent. So, you're sitting at 26 percent, so a very healthy reserve on hand. Okay, so about three months of operating cash available. Continuing down on that page, some information on your budgetary compliance. When you put together your 18, 19 general fund balance, or your budget, you had a balanced budget, you weren't planning to use any fund balance, and as I alluded to before, you added $334,000 to your general fund balance. So, back up to the top of the page, special education, at about $1.2 million of revenue, just over $3 million of expenditures, and then about the $1.9 million of transfers in to cover the remainder of the activity in that fund. That fund does not carry a fund balance in it at year end, and won't move forward. It's an in-and-out fund related to those activities. Food service fund, about $700,000 of revenue, and just over $600,000 of expenditures, leaving you about $150,000 of restricted fund balance for use to support your food service fund in the future. Debt service fund, about $2.4 million of revenue that goes in there, principal and interest going out of just over 2.5, and you have about $837,000 of fund balance that could be used to pay down debt in the future. Then your capital project fund, about $8 million of fund balance as of June 30. Keep in mind, you had a large borrowing that went into that, that fund that remained unspent at that point in time. That money has been spent subsequent to year end, and so, I would not use that number there to justify any capital cost, that money's gone. And then, some non-major funds that make up the last column there, that about $120,000 that sits there in those funds. On the next page, just a high-level summary of your long-term debt, about $36 million in general obligation debt, about $60,000 in capital leases, and then, three actuary determiner liabilities related to post-employment benefits. And so, an actuary comes in, takes a look at what the future costs could be if certain scenarios took place. We record a liability related to that, but you pay for it on a go-forward basis. So, not anything that there's a repayment plan to cover, it's just something that's built into your budget yearly, but we record a liability as of the point in time based on the information that's provided to us. So, you have the ability to borrow 10 percent of your equalized value, which is, gives you about $70 million of capacity, when you factor out your 105 statutory debt limit to what's outstanding with your GO debt. We also do what we refer to as a single audit, or an audit on your federal and state awards. Because you receive over $750,000 of federal funding, that threshold amount kicks off a single audit. And so, we look at that both from the federal side, and anytime you have a federal single audit, in Wisconsin, you're also required to have a state single audit. We had no compliance findings in the grants that we tested this year, so happy to report On the last page, we also issued a communication to those charged with governance and management. Similar to prior years, there were two material weaknesses that we've issued, first being related to internal controls over financial reporting. Because we prepare that financial statement document, we need to let you know as the governing body that we do that, and our standards require us to call that out as such. I audit municipalities year-round. 95 percent of my clients receive this as a material weakness. There's just a cost benefit to having CPA on staff with governmental financial reporting understanding, so it isn't a reflection of what management isn't doing. Again, it's just the cost benefit to that, okay? In addition, we have a material weakness in relation to the internal controls over the accounting transaction cycles. I refer to that internal control over the internal control environment, and what that means is that there's places within the significant transaction cycles, so how you pay bills, how you pay payroll, how you handle cash, that you don't have appropriate segregations of duties. Again, this is a cost benefit. In a perfect world, you'd have somewhere between four to six people involved in the various transactions of the district, and you're not, situation in the business offices is not unlike other business offices. This is a common material weakness, but something that we need to bring to your attention so that you understand what management presents, is that it requires a certain level of due diligence on your part to question the information that's provided. So, the recommendation here isn't that something needs to change, it's more or less to let you know that exists, and... Next section of that letter is a two-way communication regarding your future audits. There are ways that you would like your auditor to kick the tires differently, look at things from a different perspective, question, or see your auditor do differently. This lays out what a normal timeline is for an auditor, and when that auditor would need to know to build in that additional steps in their audit plan. So, there's some thought-provoking questions there for you to just do, and that was the joke part of the presentation. Next section is some other communication and recommendations, and really, this would be informational-type points, and some other recommendations related to things that we identified during the course of the audit that didn't raise to the level of a material weakness or significant deficiency. Lastly, there is a section labeled "Required Communication" that we need to have with you. This is where we lay out if they're running new accounting principles that were adopted during the course of the year. We list out any accounting estimates that we evaluated during the course of the audit to determine and confirm that they were neutral and non-bias. Had we had any disagreements with management, we would lay that out in this letter. Truthfully, had we, you would have heard about it long before this presentation or receiving that letter. We received nothing but cooperation from Wendy and her support staff and Pam. It's a pleasure to come work with them. You have very knowledgeable individuals in that office with a good amount of understanding that all, that DPI requires of them, and so, that's unusual when I go district to district, and so, I appreciate everything that they do to assist us in that process. So, lastly, we lay out any non-atest services that we provide to the district, so this would be us recording any journal entries, us preparing the financial statements, and ultimately, we do that so that we can determine if we were independent. Independence is very important because we can't issue an opinion without it, and I'm happy to say we were independent, so the opinion that we issued is valid. So, with that, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Questions? Seeing none, thank you, Paul.
Thank you, guys.
Alright, we're going to go to board reports now, and I have an update on the search for the district administrator. The board met last week and reduced the number down to seven, and we're in the process of checking on references with those seven, and they will be asked to submit a short video, a five-minute video, that will introduce themselves and kind of relate to the leadership profile that we developed earlier with our seven community forums, and our next meeting is the 27th, and we'll be reviewing the videos and the applicants so far. So, Mr. D'Imperio, facilities update.
Okay, relating to the two projects that were done with the referendum, the athletic multipurpose facility is substantially complete. The only work remaining there will be the construction of a storage building for related equipment. The concrete slab was poured for that in the fall, and that work will be completed in the spring. The district is managing that particular aspect of the project directly. As far as the building addition and remodeling is concerned, the district has beneficial occupancy of all spaces. Furniture has been delivered and has been placed. We are anticipating that there'll be full use of the new space and remodel space at the beginning of the semester. There is some work remaining, the landscaping for the building addition will be done in the spring, as well as there is the second phase of the fire sprinkler system will be done during next summer. That will result in the building being totally sprinkled, which not only enhances the safety of the building, but will prepare the building for any future modifications and additions.
Thank you. Dr. Lieney, correspondence.
We received a note of thanks from Donnell Warner, our middle school secretary, and her family for a plant that was given in memory of her sister.
Thank you, and our student, Representative Camden.
With the semester coming to a close, exams start on Wednesday and run through Friday. This means that the Lake Mills Link Crew at the high school is offering cocoa and crammed sessions after school to help freshmen to study for the final exams. Last Friday, two students from the FFA attended the FFA Halftime Leadership Conference in Stevens Point. Currently, right now at the high school, Future Freshman Night is going on to help eighth graders and their families get to know the building. In regards to athletics, the girls' basketball team has only one loss against first-ranked Platteville, and the boys' team is currently 10-1, with conference play starting on Thursday against Luther Prep. Charlie Bender hit his career high in overtime against Edgewood on January 4. Wrestling is 4-1 in conference, and Parents' Night is tomorrow, which is the second of their three home meets. Teachers have also started to move into the new addition to the building classrooms. The new library is also currently being moved into. Thank you.
Thank you, Camden. Mrs. Thompson.
Wendy has a little bit more.
Oh, she's got more to say?
Yeah.
Mrs. Brockert.
Okay, just one quick highlight, and I think, I thank the Lake Mills leader. There was an article last week about our breakfast program, that we changed our breakfast program at the elementary school. We're doing breakfast in the classroom, and I just wanted to highlight that Kathy Coyman, our food service director, has been, she's gone to conferences to learn more about that, offering that way in that manner, and has really worked hard to try to promote breakfast and increase our participation at the elementary school, and we appreciate Sarah writing a nice article about it as well in the paper.
Wonderful article. Anything else?
No, that's it.
No. Mrs. Thompson, elementary principal.
Just a couple of updates from the elementary school. I want to thank Mr. Shanafelt for his winter concert in preparing our third and fourth graders for their big debut in December. We had a great turnout, as always, so thanks to all the community members and parents who came out for that event. I also want to thank Mrs. Mowen for coordinating a reading event for all of our students who receive reading services. She had therapy dogs come in and meet with all of the students to be able to read books to the dogs. It's a huge highlight every year for our students. And this month kicks off our pride pledge at the elementary school, so each month, we highlight a different letter of the word "pride," and for the month of January, we're focused on the letter "P" for "pay attention." So, during our January in-service, our January assembly, we talked about what we can do to make sure that we're paying attention, to work hard and reach our dreams while at school, and paying attention to conversations that we're having with others, so teaching some social skills and some perseverance for the students as they are working through their school day. On the curriculum and instruction side of things, I presented some information to all of you about new course proposals. We have three course proposals this year, and the process for that is teaching teams or departments get together. If there is a new course that they want to propose, they work with their principal, and then they submit that for the administrative team to review and make some determinations, and then present that information to all of you. So, this year, we are proposing fifth and sixth grade choir. This would be mean an additional courses for both of those grade levels to enhance the choir experience going from fourth grade into fifth, sixth, and so on. So, all of that information is in your packets. And this month, we're going to be doing some more exploration of just what the implications of that will be to the middle school schedule by adding in two more courses. Then, the third course is strength and conditioning at the high school level, so there's details provided on what that would look like and how that would change things at the high school for the FIAID department. Any questions?
Questions? Thank you. Mrs. Bowers' report will be done by Mrs. Strike.
Mrs. Bauer had a family emergency tonight, so she submitted this report. It says, "It was great to start the new year at the middle school. It felt like both the staff and the students enjoyed their break and were ready to come back. We recently completed our second I-ready assessment. We are in our first year of implementation to work on students' individual English language arts skills. While we haven't broken down the results, anecdotally, teachers and students are reporting good growth. Mr. Grundle, the new assistant principal, continues to do a great job putting together a system to manage and address student behaviors. We are currently working on a communication system that allows concerns addressed, that allows concerns to be addressed before they become issues that he sees in the office. All parts of the system are continually looking not only at behaviors, but lagging skills and academic concerns as well, as they may be the root of what is occurring." And finally, I will be attending, Ms. Bauer, will be attending the Nurtured Heart Training in Tucson, Arizona with Mary Conchress next week to become trainers of this approach. This training, along with our January and February in-service, will continue to address social-emotional learning at the middle school.
Okay, do you have Mr. Vogel still?
I do. Mr. Vogel is at Future Freshman Night tonight, and I think by our count, we are expecting about 400 people at the high school right now, so it's a busy place. What he has presented is a complete packet of information about the cumulade system that we hope to implement at the high school, beginning with the incoming freshman class. And so, I don't want to steal any thunder, they're going to do a large presentation next, at the next board meeting, but we wanted to get you all this information so you could read through it. Basically, a cumulade system would replace class rank, so instead of competing against other classmates, you're competing against the standards, and any number of students can reach the highest standard or any of the other segments of that. So, I'd really encourage you to take a look at all of this information. It's, I want to say, probably almost four years of work from the high school to get to this point and to present you with this information. So, several people from the high school will be here, and they can answer any questions that aren't already answered in this packet. So, he just wanted me to share that with you this evening.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Brown. Director of Special Ed and People's Services.
Just a few updates on the People's Services side. In the last month, I went to kind of a basic ELL 101, what every administrator should know, and from that, with Tara's help, we're going to just revisit the district English learners' plan, and then also, coming from that training that I went to, there's a book study that focuses on ELL students and special education, and how they work together, or sometimes don't, and so I can further get some more knowledge, I guess, on that piece. The second piece on this is all of our schools now have gone through the grief-sensitive training from an outside person that came in, and they were able to give us some resources and things, so all of the staff members in their staff meetings throughout the last couple of months have gone through that, so we are officially a grief-sensitive school. On the special education end of things, this year, we purchased a brand-new van primarily to be used for our students for transition opportunities. So, that came just within the last month, and that's pretty exciting. And then, working on continuing to build the capacity within, I think I've talked about the rural autism support team from the area school districts, and just this past week, we hosted in our district and had three other school districts come to continue to kind of build our knowledge on the autism piece.
Questions? Thank you. Mrs. Strike.
I wanted to announce that we have three candidates for Dr. Mason's seat, which is will be open, and those candidates in a, in order that was drawn in a drawing last week. We will have a primary on February 8, and the candidates are, will be on the ballot in this order: Amy Litcher, Jim Williams, and Melissa Ruglitz-Walker. So, again, there's a, will be a primary because there's three, that'll take it down to two, and then the election will be in April. In the last couple of weeks, it came to our attention that there was some kind of confusing information in our employee handbook about 12-month employees and when they receive vacation days. And so, we have some updated language, and I have attached it here, and we'll consider this the first reading. Basically, what you need to know is that you don't need to work a year to earn vacation. Any 12-month employee receives vacation days as soon as they become employees, and the information in the handbook may have been a little bit confusing, so Bob Butler has written this new language for us, and it is provided there. And then, also attached to my report is the comprehensive list of all of the gifts that have been donated during the year of 2019. I missed, did you do a bottom, bottom number if you scroll through all the pages? Over $58,000 of gifts had been, have been donated through 2019, and so, once again, let me thank all the donors for that. It's a really generous community, and if you look at that list, you'll see that those donations go to a wide variety of programs within the school, which is, I think, really exciting. And then, finally, there is the Recreation Director's Report attached for your review as well.
Thank you. Community input? Mr. Klotz.
Hello to the board and administrative staff. On behalf of the Lake Mills Education Association, we want to thank you for the CPI adjustments that you made in the fall. We appreciate your hearing us and doing what you could to keep our teachers from losing buying power this year. The LMEA, LMESPA, and LMASO would like to give special, a special congratulations to Dr. Rick Mason after his announcement that he will no longer be running for a school board seat. We hope that you enjoy your retirement, and thank you for your 12 years of service and for your willingness to keep open lines of communication with us. You're leaving us quite a legacy and some awfully big shoes to fill, so thank you.
Thank you. Consent agenda. These are the items that are on the consent agenda. Approval of December 9th regular Board of Education meeting minutes. Approval of December 9th Finance Committee proceedings. Approval of December 17th Special Board of Education meeting minutes. Approval of January 8th School Board of Education meeting minutes. Approval of vouchers and invoices. Approval of Treasurers Report. Approval of Lake Mills High School 2021 Course Handbook. Approval of Co-Curricular Letter of Resignation. Approval of Support Staff Letters of Assignment. Is there... Is there any item on there that you wish to have pulled out, board? And I will take a, approval, a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any questions, comments, or anything? All right, roll call, please.
Tom Malini.
Aye.
Robert Timperio.
Aye.
David Rado.
Aye.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Um, action items, approval of John Deere Gator utility vehicle.
As we started to use the new, um, outdoor facility, it became a, apparent that we needed another vehicle to help not only move equipment, but also any, um, to help us with any injuries, and, uh, the EMS was, uh, part of this recommendation that we need another piece of equipment to move people around and, and items around, so we did go through the bidding process, and, um, the item before you is our recommendation.
I'll move the board accept a bid from Midstate Equipment from Watertown for the purchase of a new John Deere Gator in the amount of sixteen thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars and one cent.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the, um, um, a Gator. Any questions or comments on that? Roll call, please.
Tom Malini.
Aye.
Robert Timperio.
Aye.
David Rado.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of professional staff retirement.
Now, these are always, come with mixed emotions, but, uh, here is, uh, a retirement tonight for Ms. Liz Body. Uh, she currently is the elementary just, uh, library media specialist, and, um, she wrote a really beautiful letter, so I hope you had a chance to read that.
Motion, please.
I move the board approve the retirement of Ms. La- Liz Body as Lake Mills High School Library Media Specialist at the end of the two thousand and nineteen, twenty school year, and thank her for her dedicated thirty years of service to the students of the Lake Mills Area School District.
Second. Moved and seconded to reluctantly approve the retirement of Ms. Body. Roll call, please.
Robert Timperio.
Aye.
David Rado.
Aye.
Tom Malini.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that is approved unanimously. Um, approval of gifts, Mr. Rado.
I move the board accept the following gifts and thank the generous donors for their continued support of the students and programs of the Lake Mills Area School District. The Lake Mills Moravian Church's donation of two hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty cents for the Weekend Backpack Program at the Lake Mills Elementary School, the Lake Mills Optimist Club's donation of one thousand dollars to the high school Junior Optimist Club, and Saint Vincent de Paul's donation of coats, hats, gloves, boots, and socks at an estimated value of over one thousand dollars.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve the gifts. Again, a big thank you to everybody that has, has donated, and throughout the year. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
David Rado.
Aye.
Tom Malini.
Aye.
Robert Timperio.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that approved unanimously. Future agenda items.
So I wanted to remind you that your next meeting is actually Tuesday, January twenty-eighth, and that will start at four-thirty in the elementary conference room, and that's when you're going to be, um, looking over those candidate portfolios that you spoke of. And at that time, I'm gonna slip in one action item. Uh, we need to approve the open enrollment spaces for the two thousand and twenty, twenty-one school year, and we like to do that as late in January as possible, um, because that helps the J D. program. You can go, you can move back to a, a different, um, date next year when we're no longer the chartering district, but, um, so I'll sneak in, do that, and then I'll get out of the way.
Okay, the, um, meeting is the twenty-seventh.
That's right, it changed.
Oh, it changed since we wrote this, didn't it? Yeah, it's the twenty-seventh, I'm sorry.
Beginning at four o'clock.
Oh, okay.
At the elementary school.
Okay.
In the conference room at the elementary school.
Conference room, the elementary.
Okay, oops, okay. And then for the February meeting, um, two items that we know for sure will be the, um, that'll be the second reading and the approval of that handbook, um, vacation language I just shared with you, and then, um, we'll bring a little bit more information and have you vote on those course recommendations, um, that Ms. Thompson talked about tonight.
Anything else? Anybody can think of? Hey, a motion to go on executive session.
I move the board adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight-five, parent one, parent C, considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Aye, professional staff contracts.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve executive session. Roll call, please.
Tom Malini.
Aye.
Robert Timperio.
Aye.
David Rado.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, we are adjourned to executive session.